Hello, gentlemen.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Workshop with the Budget Advisory Board. I would like to know if the Chair of the Board could please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Chair Jeff Lowe.
Here.
Ross Camerata. Absent. John Rodstrom.
Here.
Michael Marshall. William Brown. Prabhu Lin Patel. Christian Massalary. Absent. Chair Donaldson, present.
Great, thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll for the Commission?
Commissioner Herbst.
President.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trent Tals.
Great, we're all here then. So, I would ask that the Chair of the Board, please begin the workshop.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor and fellow Commissioners and Auditor and City Attorney and City Manager. There's, just as to, before we start, I saw, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that I did participate remotely in your meeting on the 22nd. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here because the, originally, the meeting was scheduled on the 15th, and I do my schedule based upon our BAB meetings, and so I flew out the 16th. So when that moved to the 22nd, I apologize, it was already planned to be overseas and was not able to change, but I was fully aware of the conversation.
You will suffer no demerits on behalf of me.
Yeah.
You're fired.
Now?
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we haven't had a meeting as a Board. However, I, after your meeting on the 22nd, because of the fact that I think I pretty much know where the thoughts have been throughout working with this team over the past year, I was able to meet with the Director of Budget and the City Manager multiple times since then to review what we're going to be sharing with you today. The one big question that we all had at the end of your conversation on the 22nd was, okay, how do we pay for this? And I remember that there was Commissioner Glassman said, oh, I think the tally is around $5 million. Well, the great news is, is that since that 22nd, we've had the actual numbers come in for revenueing, and from the state and the county, along with some others, and since the proposed budget was published to the public, there was an additional $5.3 million. So, in today's presentation, we are...
So, not to interrupt you, so what's the total amount that we are receiving in, as a result of increase in values?
Well, it wasn't just the increase in values. Increase in values, so we're going to have in general fund a revenue of $458 million.
Right.
Of that additional 5.3, only, from additional ADVORM, was only $900,000 of it. 1.9 was from the state's adjustment on our sales tax sharing, additional in our community communications services tax, which we all pay if you have a cellphone, et cetera. That number came in at finalized, an additional $900,000. Also, our state sharing of some other things were about $800,000. So that's where the 5.3, only $900,000 came in from the different, in the ADVORM. So our total ADVORM this year is $216 million in revenue, against last year's $194. So we have $21.8 million more in ADVORM revenue than last year, which is 11.2% increase. Some of those, now, the one thing that I...
Plus the sales tax and the, plus the sales tax increments that you just described.
Yes, so, for example, we're bringing in $216 million from ADVORM, but our budget for general fund is $458 million. So there are a lot of additional things, like, for example, we're bringing in $53 million from the fire assessment fee, that goes into general fund. So there are other revenue streams aside from ADVORM taxes. One interesting note that I've always found as a person on BAB, the total revenue brought in, because we spend so much time discussing ADVORM, and we, and for the citizens of Fort Lauderdale that may be listening, I commend your predecessors and this Commission for 17 years of a flat ADVORM rate, because when we compare ourselves to other cities, we are giving our taxpayers a great value by keeping that number low at 4.11. When you look at our sister cities very close by, they run anywhere from 5%, 6%, up to 8%, so if you're talking about Wilton Manners or Oakland Park, Davey, Hollywood, et cetera, all of those residents are paying for the same value house, a higher tax rate of 20% to maybe 80% more, because they don't live in Fort Lauderdale. So, the other thing that I found...
So are you saying we should move to Fort Lauderdale?
I would, that's a city you never want to leave.
Exactly.
I read Strategic Communications. So, the one thing that I just wanted to point out, because we've also talked a lot about fire and public safety, fire and police, the fire and police budget is $280 million between the two. We only bring in $216 million in ADVORM tax. So when you talk to, when I look at my property tax bill and look at it, but we also bring in $53 million in fire assessment. So, that combined is $269 million. So, your entire city tax bill, if you're just looking at your ADVORM and your fire assessment, is just going for police and fire, and doesn't cover that. So this city, when you look at the revenue stream, is very diverse, so that's why we haven't had to rely as much on our ADVORM as other cities. So I think that's a very positive thing, and I just wanted to share that. So when I have neighbors and they say, where does our money go? I'm like, okay, well, we have a, we have a $1.1 billion budget that you guys, that all of you are going to be part of the first reading tonight, and hopefully vote in favor of, but our property taxes, including the fire assessment fee, only brings in 27% of that. So there is a lot of other revenue that comes into the city that's not just on that. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that. So, the Strategic Communications Department has put together a presentation for us today. I'll be going through the pages on that, but there is a little video at the beginning, and I want to thank them upfront, but just to share with you, the bulk of everything that you requested on the 22nd, we were able to put in for tonight's reading, so I'm pleased to have that, and we'll go through and discuss those points.
Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions, or Brian, before we do the video? Okay.
Okay, if we can queue up the video.
Lights, camera, action.
The city of Fort Lauderdale is poised to make the biggest investment ever in improvements and enhancements to service with the new fiscal year 2024 Community Investment Plan and Operating Budget.
Can't hear it. Stop. Cut. Rewind. Nice pictures.
The city of Fort Lauderdale is poised to make the biggest investment ever in improvements and enhancements to service with the new fiscal year 2024 Community Investment Plan and Operating Budget. This fiscal year, there are more than $1 billion dedicated to new and ongoing projects across the city to maintain and enhance the city's valuable infrastructure. The process of creating new budgets starts in January. That's when the City Commissions set the strategic priorities for fiscal year '24. These include economic development, housing accessibility, infrastructure and resilience, public places, public safety, transportation and traffic. The Commission also wanted to maintain the current mileage rate, so to achieve the Commission's goals and balance the budget, city staff meticulously reviewed current service levels and considered ways to align resources to enhance service, all without raising the property tax rate. Here are a few highlights from the new fiscal year 2024 budget. Infrastructure: $300 million in new funding for the city's Community Investment Plan to build new and maintain existing infrastructure. Public Places: $19 million in funding to maintain the beauty of the city's parks and medians. Economic Development: $16 million in targeted investments within the city's community redevelopment areas to foster vibrant redevelopment. Housing Accessibility: $13.8 million in services to assist those experiencing homelessness, as well as expand housing accessibility. Public Safety: $6.5 million in enhanced funding to increase public safety levels, including 10 new staff positions in fire rescue and 14 new police officers. Transportation: $5.7 million to enhance transportation and traffic services. City staff takes their responsibility very seriously. We're passionate about building a strong financial foundation and positioning Fort Lauderdale for a prosperous future, but your input is vital. Get involved in the budget process each year. Here's how. Connect with your Commissioner and share your feedback. Join the Budget Advisory Board. Attend budget hearings and share your thoughts. Create your own budget using the City's Balancing Act portal. There, you can submit your suggestions and share feedback with the Commission and City Management. We're listening, and we take all your comments seriously. Together, we're building a bright future for Fort Lauderdale. Together, we are FTL.
Nice.
Thank you. You put up the first screen. So all of us during the year, this is a very dedicated Board. I want to commend all of my fellow members. They spend a lot of time, we donate our time in the month of May, we have three to four meetings where we receive packets from three departments on a Thursday. They're typically 70 to 140 pages, and we need to have reviewed all three of those by Monday to submit questions in advance, so that then they have an opportunity to respond, so that we can relook at those on Tuesday for our Wednesday night, and then we start it all over again on Thursday. So for three weeks straight, it's basically, for me, it was like a 40-hour week. So, we also happen to represent you as the city leaders, and we also, a lot of us are involved in HOAs or in other different communities. I know that there's quite a few of us that are, happen to be involved in the Council Civic Associations, et cetera. So we get feedback. People do not hesitate to share with the BAB members, as they do with you and your staffs, during the process, during the year. So this has been a great experience, again, this year, of helping to feed your information, your priorities, to get into this budget. Another way that the public can input is, every year, we have been having the Budget Balancing Act is online. This year, there were 423 people that looked at it and looked through the budget. 17 people put in their suggestions for the budget, and the majority of those wanted to decrease their property taxes while spending more on police and fire. So, I think one of the things, the takeaways, is that that's pretty much what everyone ideally would like, but this is a budget, and you have to balance budget, and you can't necessarily reduce your revenues and increase your expenditures, like the federal government does. We don't have that option. The next page, we've highlighted some of the strategic enhancements in general fund today. Really, the discussion here was really about general fund, not too much about all of the other funds that make up that $1.1 billion total budget, so we're concentrating on that. One of the big, significant things that we heard strongly in your goal-setting meeting in January was the need for enhanced public safety, and I think that is very strong this year, in the fact that we're adding 14 police officers. Three of those will be part of the homeless outreach additional program, and the rest will be patrol. We're also adding 10 FTEs for fire rescue. The bulk of that is taking, I believe it was two stations, or is it three stations? It's two stations, so that everyone is aware, when we hear the phrase "three men" to an EMS, if you don't have three or three team members, not to be gender biased, I just happen to use the word "men," but if we have three staff members on an EMS, then the ladder truck does not have to accompany. So there were, when we looked at the locations of where there were more EMS calls, where there was not already three team members on an EMS, that is where, and because of the shifts, that's why you need nine for, to cover that. In addition, there is going to be funding that has been added of $1.5 million to bring on the 14 additional people that will be working at the future substation downtown, and that would be because of the fact that we have to start to interview and enroll in. That is a mid-year budget enhancement, so that would be for April, and then it would be an annualized for the following year. There's also, the other one of the things that we've heard about in parks and rec, that the maintenance of our parks, and I heard a lot of our constituents, and that comes up a lot, so the Parks Director came to us and said, you know, this is one of the things that we're having an issue with, is some of our part-time help. So, we were big supporters on increasing our minimum wage, so that we can get better results, and so that's $112,000. It's not additional positions, but we think that we can then hire better for those, for those part-time, and that was also for the summertime with the camps, and making sure that we have adequate staffing and paid accordingly. In the City Manager's office, he had eliminated three and a half positions, when we were originally thinking that we were not going to have as robust revenues. So there was strategic reductions throughout the city, everything was looked at, but then there is a shift in adding 1.5 FTEs for additional staffing and housing navigation and public affairs. So taken up at your initiative, and when you look across here about the homeless, which seems to be unfortunately growing as more people are finding themselves out of homes or priced out of the market, by having the additional, which in the video mentioned, has been a priority, and so we're adding additional police officers in that, and we're adding additional city staff, and to help people navigate that. The next slide is talking about the growth in the total number of FTEs that have been occurring over the past 10 years. The bulk of the increase in employees, 74%, has been in police and fire. So we are now up to 1,942.6, so how we get to .6, I don't share, but that is the number of FTEs that are currently in this, in this budget. When you look at the number of personnel that we have in police and fire, and the growth of the city, we compared that to other cities within Florida, and as a percentage of 1,000 people, we rank higher than some of the larger cities than us in the state. So Tampa, St. Pete, and Cape Coral are all larger than us, and we have a higher concentration of police and fire than those cities. We are equal in the number of police as a percent of 2.89 per 1,000 to Miami. We're higher than them on fire. We're at 2.34, and they're at 1.72. Now, where we are not as high in concentration of police and fire, but it is a much smaller city than us, is Miami Beach. So Miami Beach has one of the highest percentages of police and fire of any city in Fort Lauderdale. They only have 80,000 residents, but they have, for their police department in their budget, and this was all public information that we were able to pull from, just as ours is public, they have 531, which would be 5.49 per 1,000 people. However, when you look at the difference in the tax rates of those two cities, so if we're going to, wanting to model down the road that we were trying to, we're at Miami's now, as a ratio, however, Miami charges not 4.11% to the citizens, they charge 7.45. And Miami Beach charges 5.81. So if we want to be Miami Beach, we're going to have to increase your taxes. So, if we want to be Miami Beach, we're going to have to increase your taxes by 41%. And if we want to be Miami, we need to increase your ad valorem by 83%. So, I think that's, it's good to see what is out there, but when we look at the other cities like Tampa, they're at 2.3. Number of police officers per 1,000, we're at 2.89. So, as we continue to increase, and not to say that we shouldn't be continuing to be strategic like we were this year, and we're adding 10 and 14, but it doesn't need to be a dramatic shift overnight because the percentages don't, don't equate to the populations of other cities and based upon our tax rates. So, I just wanted to share that with you to make sure.
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's excellent information, and I really appreciate that, but I also wanted to note that even though Miami Beach, per 1,000 population, has a significantly higher number for police, we're pretty even with fire.
Yes, we are.
So, that's important because, again, the difference in the mileage rate, but yet we're still pretty even with them with fire. I always prefer to look at some of the other comparisons in our own county. Now, Hollywood, just as an example, Hollywood is similar to us in population. I believe Hollywood might be, is it the second or the third? Is it Pembroke Pines or Hollywood the second most populated? Pembroke Pines is the second, so Hollywood's third, but they're, they're close after Fort Lauderdale. Hollywood only has an average of 2.21 sworn police officers per 1,000. So, they're actually below the, the average where we're at 2.89. Hollywood only has 337 budgeted sworn police officers, 337. We have 530 sworn police officers for a population difference of only 30,000 people. So, I think we're doing pretty well in comparison to that. And also with sworn fire, they only have 213. We have 429. So, I think that's a significant comparison as well to show within our own county how much more staff we are with police and fire.
Well, and they also have a much higher tax rate.
Exactly.
So, they must be spending a lot of money on some other additional things, other general fund.
Right.
For them to be, you know, but they may not be, I haven't analyzed their budget, but they don't have as many revenue streams as what we have, so they may not be getting to that number the same way. But I just wanted to share that, so I think.
Brian, could I kind of chime in on that too? Because, you know, one of the things I've always heard through the years is that because we're the county seat and because we are the top tourist destination in the county, that our daytime population actually doubles, which Hollywood probably doesn't do because they're not drawing all the employment and, and quite the same level of tourism that we get. I don't know if we have any idea of, you know, maybe Laura, is that something you could look at if we're going to do comparisons? Again, like I said, I know we've always talked about our daytime population doubling, and that's a big reason why these per capita comparisons aren't necessarily accurate because we have a different daytime population. Could you speak to that?
Not really. Laura Reese, Director, Office of Management and Budget. We can put together the data in terms of population. The Convention and Visitors Bureau would typically be the group that would track tourists and things like that. We can see what we can put together, but the budget team probably wouldn't be the right team to put that together.
Well, I think, I think the commissioner has a good point because I sit on the Tourist Development Council, and we do have a significant, significantly larger tourist population than Hollywood or any of the others. That's why they brand themselves Visit Lauderdale, right? But at the same ti, and also, we have a larger commuter population, people who commute from the western suburbs into Fort Lauderdale more so than any other city. So, it does merit additional sworn officers and fire personnel to, to have on our staff. So, I don't know where that balance and how you create that ratio of, of need versus, versus supply, but I do know, and I commend our, our public safety personnel for keeping the statistics of crime so low and keeping the statistics of deaths so low when it comes to responding to emergency situations. And, and I think that too has to factor into how many, how many police and fire personnel we need because if we, if we already have low crime rates, you know, where are we applying these new officers? I commend the board for recommending adding new officers for our homeless outreach staff because clearly we have a need there. Having met recently with the county and asking them for additional help, we really, we were told that we, they give us plenty of help, but we don't need, we can't expect anything more from them. So, so, you know, these are, these are, these are challenges that we have as a city, but I have to say, you know, city manager, you've done a great job in creating the balance that we need at this point in time to ensure the safety of our community. So, thank you.
Well, and I think another thing that we need to do as we look to enhance, I think it's going to need to be a continual because of the fact that our challenges of recruiting, et cetera, and our number of, of personnel which are eligible for retirement will continue to increase over the next couple of years. We need to be very much aware that this is going to need to be a budget enhancement going forward, but then we have to start being strategic because when we may double to Commissioner Herbst during the day, that may not necessarily where be where the crime is. So, we need to look at our crime statistics, and if we need to have more officers in the evening regardless of what our daytime population is, so we shouldn't get tied up on tourists, et cetera, we're really going to need to take an approach where which area of the city, and that is why this team and then with your support have continued with ShotSpotter and other enhancements. The license plate reader is again in this budget. All of the enhancements with the, with the live feeds, et cetera, with the real-time crime center, all of these enhancements that the last three police chiefs have come to this board and have, have requested, the technology is helping us, which is helping to keep those statistics low. Our crime rates are low, but we're going to just have to not let these statistics be the, they're a guide. So, I just wanted to point it out that it doesn't, so if somebody was to say, well, could we have done more than the 10 and 14? Yes, but we also have vacancy rates, et cetera. So, we're in line with the other cities, but now it'll be more strategic positions like the homeless, et cetera, and maybe some additional at night, et cetera. So, I just wanted to share that even though the city's employees have grown dramatically or by all of these numbers, when you look at it over the last 10 years, when, when my neighbors say, what, you've added 350 staff members? Well, the bulk of that has been in, over 75% have been in police and fire, and we know that public safety has been a priority and will continue to be. We just need to make sure that we're adding strategically and smartly. Okay? The next slide that we wanted to, to share with you today was a follow-up on your request for additional nonprofit funding, which this board has never really been in favor of. I can tell you from my peers that are probably would love to talk right now, in the fact that we wanted to make sure that we have public safety first because that was your big priority. We don't recall from reviewing your conversations and the tape from January that nonprofits were any of your priorities. So, this has always been, if we have enough money, then yes, we should continue, and that some of these organizations are doing a great job in helping the citizens of this city. So, in, there was conversation, so I just wanted to recap that for tonight, there has been put in the $100,000 back for Stranahan House, even though they haven't spent the money for the last three years. I guess it's in a holding fund. And, and that was what the strat, that was the thought process, just so that everybody was aware. When we looked at that they had not withdrawn the $100,000 that had been dedicated in the past year's budget, that maybe that's some place we could save for next year. So, just to be clear on that. And then we've increased the earning, early learning coalition of Broward County, an additional $25,000 from $50,000, and that does affect over 2,500 children within the city. It's not one of the nonprofits that had come to us in the past that maybe served 30 or 40 children. So, I just wanted to point those out. Any questions on nonprofits before we went to next slide?
Why don't you just keep going?
Okay. And then there had been quite a bit of conversation in another department category that BAB has always looked at. This is the discretion of all of you as our elected leaders was the special events and public space activation. So, we really haven't vetted these or really gone into that. That's not something that this board takes on like we do with all the departmental details. So, in this since your August 22nd meeting, we've added a Juneteenth festival of $40,000 is in tonight's budget. Also, the David Deal Play Day of additional $30,000. So, those are additional, and then Carl.
Brian, Brian, is this Juneteenth festival, is that, is that something we're giving towards an organization that's putting one on, or are we putting one on?
These are all ours.
These are all our.
These are all our events? Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, actually, if I may, there, it could be whether we can partner with the county or we can do one ourselves.
Well, if we joined forces, obviously, it might be a bigger and better festival. Depends if the county does it in Fort Lauderdale. If the county does it in Miramar, it's not going to benefit much, us much, so, okay. Thank you.
It was my understanding that these new, these new events have not been planned, but we've put in the budget, and there's plenty of time between now and Juneteenth and the other to put together the proposal and, and what's the best thing to recognize that day for the citizens of Fort Lauderdale. So, we've put the money into the, into the budget. So, the total of special events and, and public space activation would be $1,562,000 for the next fiscal year. Of course, the largest is our Fourth of July celebration at 400,000. The next largest is the Riverwalk activation at 225,000. 100,000 of that is additional lighting, and then 125 is for various events. The Oceanside Park activation of 115,000, and then the other ones that are six figures are Summer Jams, the Cisdrunk Festival, and the Great American Beach Party, which is Memorial Day. So, that is how the $1.5 million from general fund would be going toward these events, which are sponsored by Fort Lauderdale. Okay? The next item that had a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of this $5.3 million additional funding that we came, we now have realized, is going toward this micro-transit program. I know that this board had a lot of conversation over this when, when Ben came and transportation. There are a lot of gentlemen up here today that are not in favor of expanding this or giving this kind of taxpayer dollars because of the fact that, yes. So, I know that a lot of conversation, we feel, we felt that there were gaps in the, in the layout of it. So, for example, you can go in the Galt area, and you can take it into a different city and, and go and give their dollars to their restaurants, but you can't go from the Galt anywhere south of Oakland, but you can get it. So, you can't come to my neighborhood, or we can't get on it, but we can walk to Oakland and then go to Lauderdale by the Sea, or you can go to Galt. So, there's gaps on A1A on the beach.
Maybe you should live in a better neighborhood, Brian.
Well, Commissioner Glassman couldn't get in on it either. So, so, you know. But we can walk down to the state park, and we can get it and go south of Sunrise. So, there were some things that I challenged that, you know, if we're doing it as a beach mover, that it should be going up and down the beach and not have a gap between Oakland and Sunrise and be able to then come down to La Solas.
We can go south of Sunrise and north of Oakland, but not that gap, which is a significant population with all those condominiums.
All the condominiums, all those single-family homes, et cetera. So, and as the president of Central Beach Alliance has shared with me, there are, most of the people that are, he's seen in the Central Beach area are just tourists, and they're using it as a free Uber because they're coming out of the hotels, and they're going in, and they're on it. And that's, I happen to own a vacation rental. I say, walk down to the corner of Sunrise and whatever, and then get your free ride. And that's what a lot of people that are, and so we had challenged, could there be funding from part of our tourism dollars or the Central Beach business dollars, et cetera, and not taxpayers that are footing the bill for a lot of out-of-state people? It's not taking people out of their cars. It's taking people that would have been in an Uber or a taxi was part of our feeling. So, I'm just putting that out there because I'm representing everyone here on the board.
Brian, didn't I see something? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, Brian and Mr. Mayor. I know that the mayor had reached out to the county mayor, so, and I'd spoken to the county mayor and a couple commissioners about some of that money coming from the county. First of all, I don't know what the status of that is, and number two, if the county does come up with some of that money, where does that, that will offset that, the money in the budget for us right now? What is the status of that? Why don't we ask Ben? Ben, Ben Rogers? This would be through the NPO.
Correct. Well, not, no, not necessarily.
Do you mean the penny tax?
Yes.
Ben can talk to that.
I can. Good afternoon, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. The mayor saw me, I was kind of hiding behind the corner here.
I know, but now you're in the spotlight.
Not far away, yeah. Get further back.
I was going to call out.
So, I think there's a couple of things to, to talk about. One, on the, on the county funding, yes, we have reached out to the county a few times. I believe we're still pending an answer. I actually met with their transportation director last week on this. They shared some of the concerns that they have with their program. They are building their own micro-transit program right now. They're trying to hopefully have it launched by the end of this calendar year, early next year, but for a commitment of funding that has not been provided at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if we do receive that funding from the county, which is very much needed, and they can pilot on us, or they could use our, our model as one that they could use for the rest of the county, but we would certainly put that back in general fund.
Okay, so what are the next steps?
That was, thank you, that was my question.
Yeah. What are next steps then? How do we, do we, who do we have to contact? Is this something that your office is, is advocating lobbying on behalf of the city?
Yeah, we are, and so is the city manager's office, so we're still working through that. And I think there are some surtax things that are in the process of changing for the future, and they're in, you know, the draft form right now, so hopefully there's opportunity there, but, but as the city manager said, as of right now, there is no funding going towards it from, from the county surtax.
So, does the city commission have an interest in, in funding this expanded program until such time as we are able to secure funding through the county? What do you, Commissioner Herbst, what are your thoughts?
Yes, as a matter of fact, you know, Brian, you bring up a great point. One of the reasons we were able to connect the Galt to Lauderdale by the Sea is that they had already concluded a deal with Lauderdale by the Sea on their own, separate from the city of Fort Lauderdale, so we were able to tie in with that expansion of it. I told them at the time that I would love to see this run the entire length of the beach. I think this should run all the way from top to bottom, and if we have to fund that, I think we should do it. I'm not sure I completely agree with you, though, that this is not removing cars, you know, so if, if I go at a hotel, there's at least a 50/50 chance that I'm going to get in my car and go drive somewhere, but moreover, because this is an electric vehicle, it, it really works to reduce, you know, some of that carbon footprint. So, you know, you're not calling an Uber, which is more likely going to be a gas combustion engine. So, if I can get people into an electric vehicle and maybe multiple people into one vehicle because that's kind of how their business model works, you know, we're reducing congestion. I don't have Uber circulating the area. I may have, you know, four people in one of these. I, I still think it makes a lot of sense, and, and again, you know, we talk about, we talk about climate resiliency. I think this fits into that, and I think we really need to be mindful of the larger picture here of what we're trying to accomplish in addition to, you know, getting cars off the street. It's also about, you know, trying to work into some of that climate initiatives that, that the city's been focusing on. So, I, I think the more that we can do to, to promote any of these micro-mobility alternatives, I think, works for all of us, and certainly, and I, I know I've talked with Ben at length, I've talked with Greg about this, and I've talked to some of the folks in the county commission about this as well. I keep trying to shake that tree because I really do think that, I know there's some impediment. I keep trying to shake that tree because I really do think that, I know there are some impediments at the state level with respect to how that certex gets used. I'm hoping we can resolve those and I think we need to keep pushing very hard in that direction.
To add to his comments, let's not forget the model that we had in mind when we built the parking garage, La Solas Parking Garage. Remember, we were, we were thinking that people would come from the suburbs. Instead of looking for parking spaces on the beach, they'd park their car there and we would have some sort of tram or something, which I don't know where that, where that project has gone. But certainly, Circuit fulfills that, that goal of having a station stop at the parking garage and then taking people up and down the beach. So, it's not just for tourists who stay in hotels, it's for tourists who come from the suburbs, who want to come with their families and it's a hop on, hop off kind of thing where they can go to any part of the beach. So, that kind of fits into that original model that we had in mind from a few years ago.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's two other things I'd like to just put in here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, you mentioned, John, about taking cars off the road. The other thing is parking, somebody that's going to be a tourist down here, there's less of a need to, I mean, some people not actually rent a car, so that's one less car they need to rent. And taking up parking spaces up and down the beach, if you have an Uber or to have like the Circuit could, could help with that. The second thing, I think there's a little misunderstanding about, or misrepresentation of something that was said a little earlier. We have those four spots that we've done with our pilot program. Somebody said about funding the county for their pilot program. That's different from what we're talking here. What we're talking, the 1.8 million is expanding and continuing the four spots that we have. The county is, I believe, is in my district, District Four. That's separate, we're not funding that, that's county funds that they're doing on their own. Is that correct, Ben?
That's correct. And Mayor, if I can take a second here, I assume this conversation is going to come up and I know there's a lot of concerns that the BAB has about the use of funds. One thing to note is that last year was a pilot project, right? We got temporary money and we kind of explored different ways to provide the service. If this is funded, staff's prepared to come back in October and give the commission kind of a future operation plan on what it looks like by taking all of the pieces of information that we've heard and show you what the future would look like. But I went ahead and have a draft slide. If IT could put that up now, it can give you an understanding of what we're looking at. We're trying to kind of build out three different service areas. Within those service areas, there'd be a free ride area to try to promote the short trips in the dense area. And then there's kind of a boundary area or peripheral area that there might be a small $1 or $2 fare. But the goal is to connect all of the city. And then if you go from area to area or service area to service area, there might be a surcharge fee. Because again, the goal of this is to have short connections in dense areas and the amount of time it takes for a Circuit to go from the Galt all the way to La Solas or City Hall is in excess.
Can you explain what the colors mean?
Yeah, so in this, and again, we will be more prepared in October, but I just wanted to address some of the concerns I've heard. It's that we'd have three primary service areas. So, you have a red one, a purple one, and a green one. Within those areas, you can, you can ride in the solid colors, so the dark red, the dark purple, and the dark green for a $0 fee, right? So, those are our priority areas, that's the dense population, to your point, on the barrier island. If you park at the garage or go into the core area, anywhere in the red to red, or dark red to dark red, dark purple to dark purple or dark green to dark green, it'd be a $0 fare. What we're looking at now is if you want to get outside of our dense areas and still have a connection at a lower cost, maybe there's a dollar or a $2 fee that's added for the trips within those same colors. And then there might be a higher fee if you're going to go from color to color. So, at the end of the day, you could take it from the Galt and get all the way down to, you know, the elbow room, but it might cost a couple more dollars than it would if you would stay within the Galt service area.
Ben, could you do me a favor? Don't we have an agenda item also where they bid the Beach Improvement District is allocating funding for this program?
That's correct.
And how much is that?
I believe they're supporting $19,000.
Just $19,000?
That's correct.
And is it just for the rest of this fiscal year or are they thinking of going forward with it into FY '24?
I believe that's FY '24, but I'll have to confirm.
Okay, because I want to make sure that we coordinate with them. I agree with what I've heard here in terms of continuity. I do think that it needs to not have the gap between Oakland and Sunrise. And also even downtown, just so everyone's aware, this is servicing Flagler Village downtown, but south of Sunrise. So, we have a gap between Wilton Manners and Sunrise, even though Wilton Manners also has the Circuit, correct?
That's correct.
So, we need to fill that gap as well.
Okay. And that's what we're prepared in October to have a little more definition to this. But you can see there are some expanded areas that it goes over to. And I think the Galt was coming over to Court Ridge is one of the requests. We actually have extended here all the way to Sunrise and 95. So, it includes more the northwest and it also includes up to 13th Street. So, and south of the river, a part of Rio Vista and some of those neighborhoods. So, we've taken some of that initial input and we'll further define it if funding is appropriated and go from there.
Commissioner Sternman, did you have anything additionally you wanted to ask? No, no, that's fine. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. The only last thing that I had a question for Ben was, so this is a net number on the screen of 1.75 because of the fact that it's actually about a 2.5 million and 200,000 is coming from the parking fund, 2.3 is coming from general fund, and we're anticipating 750,000 of ad revenue. But do we have a commitment on the ad revenue that'll be coming into the, that I wasn't sure on?
I would have to defer to one of my colleagues on that. I can come back up in a few seconds and confirm.
Okay. Because, you know, that could be a big shortfall in general fund and that's three police officers. So, we're trying to look at, you know, so I'm hearing everything and it sounds great, but we're just trying to, you know, as an advisory board, we're trying to make sure that we're taking care of everyone's dollars for the taxpayer.
Okay. So, Ben, you ran away. I just wanted to ask you quickly, so how do you get that gap on the beach? You know, to Commissioner Herbst's point, you know, how do we fill that gap? I mean, do you have to get out, walk, and then get on again? I mean, how do we, how do we change that?
So, we're still defining that. If they put the map back up, you can see that that, that this proposed map right now has that light green tail that goes from Oakland Park down. That was not existent before this proposed area. But to go from green to purple, you could still stay in the same cart. There just might be a surcharge fee because you're getting that cart out of its primary service area and taking it longer. So.
So, they will travel that distance, though?
That's what we're planning right now. And again, this is just an illustration of what we're working towards. And we are planning to come back at a conference meeting to solidify this and share that with the commission.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, in tonight's budget, there is funding of 1.75 million, assuming that we're getting the 750 in ad revenue back. So, just so everyone knows. And that was, is a follow up to your 22nd meeting. The last, one of the last slides then, this is just another recap slide. Next, next. Okay, so this is just some adjustments and these are really since the proposed budget. So, this is as a result of your, the conversation that you had on the 22nd. And I pretty much have talked about all these, except for part of the savings, I wanted to point out. The Citywide Lawn and Tree Services final contract came in at $366,000 less. So, that's a great positive. And then one of the things that we do have to pay for is our FVC Railway grade crossing maintenance. We did not have our bill yet and that came in at 833,000 more than what we originally had in the budget. So, fortunately, we had this extra 5.3 million to help pay for that new bill. The other thing that came up in the conversation, we have added an additional $500,000 in the sidewalk gap construction. There was already $3.5 million in the CIP for sidewalks for next year and that ramps up in '25, '26, and '27. And we had put in the 2023 budget the additional money to have the surveys so we could identify where we really don't have sidewalks and where we do, et cetera. And that was part of the roadway, so.
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, what's, what's the board's feeling on that? And I have a question about it because I understand the need for that. It is a need, but I also think you need to have a plan, you need to have a survey, you need to see who wants sidewalks, who doesn't want sidewalks. So, in a year where we're, you know, trying to make ends meet in this particular budget, what does that extra $500,000 do? Will it even be spent in fiscal year 2024? You said we have 3.5 already, but we don't have a plan. We haven't done any identification.
No, we don't have the reports back yet, so.
And we don't have any identification of, because I hear from people even in my district who don't want sidewalks. So, I don't know what that $500,000 does if it was an emergency or it was something, oh, wow, we need to have it because it's, we need it now. I would understand, but I'm trying to figure out the sense of urgency for the extra $500,000.
It was just trying to make sure that a lot of conversation that happened on August 22 that we were trying to fill in the boxes of what the requests and what sounded like there was consensus.
Right.
So, there's not a specific plan yet?
There's no specific plan? I think the plan is.
Dollars in.
I think we need like $40 million.
Okay.
So, so, and there's a, there's a set of priorities as to who's going to get it. I mean, there are certain neighbors that are begging for it and rightly so. And, and so adding $500,000 isn't earmarking towards any specific project. It's just to add to the, to the sum that's available to complete the projects that are already planned going forward.
And if this additional revenue would have been at only 4 million, this probably wouldn't have made the cut. But because of the fact that these additional revenues came in, in trying to be conscious of everyone's requests that we're sitting here, so I felt that that was appropriate because we heard that very strongly from District Four. So, that's why we're having a discussion.
What is the plan, city manager, in terms of sidewalks? I certainly understand around schools, the need, I understand in certain areas, but how are we actually prioritizing this and what is this extra half a million dollars going to do?
So, I'm going to ask about, Mr. Green, can I have, to answer that question, Commissioner, can I have Ben come up here, I mean, to the podium? Ben, thank you. We had a whole conversation about this last week in my office. Thank you very much. It was actually very informative. To answer, I think you were telling me in June of this coming year, we should have that initial plan in place, the sidewalk plan, is that correct, sometime in the summer?
That's correct. As part of this current year's budget, there was $180,000 allocated for a sidewalk plan. And so, that has started, it's underway. And we're hopeful that in late spring, we can bring it back and to the commission with results. And what that's doing is it's looking at all the criteria you just talked about, Commissioner Glassman. You know, how do we prioritize schools? How do we prioritize dense areas? How do we prioritize areas where there's more traffic volume on the streets than less traffic volume? So, we're going to go through a whole matrix. We'll have some public outreach sessions and then the goal is to come back at the end of summer or end of spring, early summer next year with a recommendation. We do have a list of current requests and that's what I'll call a list of requests. They haven't been, you know, necessarily vetted or prioritized in any way.
The other question you had is, they keep using the term gap. I think we decided probably a better term would be a master plan. Gap makes it look like, you know, things that are broken, things that are actually broken, not new sidewalks. There's, that already is funded through Public Works, correct?
That's correct. Public Works has some reoccurring dollars that goes towards the repair and maintenance of sidewalks. And this master plan will look at new connections and connection, and new sidewalks.
And we do have a feel, I mean, even before, some of the areas that are, that are actually critical that need new gap funding. I mean, you haven't, as we discussed, you do have a feel right now that we at least get started on some of these projects.
But there's already money in there for some additional projects and there's projects in the pipeline.
Right.
So, I mean, all the CIP projects, if you look at the list, I mean, as our seawalls, as our stormwater, et cetera, there is a, there is a plan and there is something that's moving along. We have a billion dollars of ongoing projects, as that slide showed. So, unfortunately, if somebody makes a request, there's already other ones that are in pipeline. So, we don't kick those and because somebody became vocal on something else. So, there's, there's a process and they need to get into the, into line.
Okay.
So, that was the highlights on that one. Expenditure adjustments, there will be in a, we still, there is, you will be approving a budget, hopefully first reading tonight and second reading in another week on the 13th. The big question is still the open contracts. So, we have put into this budget what is currently on the table. We do not have signed agreements with our largest unions yet. So, that, I'm just stating as a caveat, when you're trying to do a budget, there, if those numbers change between now and when you sign an agreement with these bargaining units, those will take away from something else because we've put in the numbers based upon what the current negotiations are, which are higher than what they were at the proposed. So, that's, that's missing and there's nothing we can do about that. We need to approve the budget, but just be aware that if you approve negotiations higher than what is currently in the budget, you'll have to figure out where you get the money from in the fiscal year during the year and that is also retroactive. But that should make it easier for your 2025 budget, which this team starts next month because we would then have a three-year deal. So, we would then know what the real numbers are. And then revenue adjustments, these are basically, I've already talked about these. Thank you for making the slides, though. And then the, the last thing, I know that the vice mayor had brought up a conversation about adding an additional holiday, which when I was listening, I was like, well, there's two federal holidays that we don't currently acknowledge. We don't acknowledge Columbus Day or Juneteenth. Those are both federal holidays. The state of Florida has different holidays than what we do as a city as well and so does the county. So, then none of them are lining up when I looked at them. However, a holiday and holiday pay is really a, not so much for the taxpayers and the citizens, that is an employee benefit. And that, the fact that we have over 84% of our city employees are part of a bargaining unit, that really needs to be negotiated as President's Day was in the bargaining process. Those holidays have not been currently a priority of the bargaining units at this point. They have other things on the table, but that would be how we would do that because it really doesn't have helped the citizens or the taxpayers. It's really boils down to that $400,000 a day is all payroll expenses. And that needs to be negotiated through union contracts and not through a conversation with budgeting with the DIES. So, that was why when we were looking at these, it didn't make sense to put this in there because that's really employee benefit and that needs to be negotiated through the union negotiation. So, I would anticipate that because of the fact that that's now a new federal holiday, that the bargaining units will probably add that to the table at some point. And that would be the appropriate place for that to, to take place. And that was about all I had for what we couldn't or could put in based upon your conversations that you had in open forum on the 22nd, based upon these additional revenues. I didn't feel as if we needed to rehash the bulk of this book, but I'm open to any conversations or questions. And I hope that for tonight's meeting, that you can read, have a reading of the first reading and a unanimous vote on tonight's budget. I'm open up to questions.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else on the board have any comments or additions they'd like to make? Jeff? Okay, John?
No comments.
You're good, you're all, no comment. With his hands wrapped tightly around him. Tightly.
I'm quiet today.
Mike? Nothing? Okay. Bill?
Just, just quickly, when the discussion came up when you were comparing other cities for police and fire, I think you have to look at it holistically because let's take the police department, for instance. They have a fugitive warrant section. Does Hollywood have one? Possibly not. There are more specialized units in Fort Lauderdale Police Department than some of the surrounding cities have because they rely upon a lot of the county resources for that, especially with on the fire side, we have the executive airport and we have to have an ORFAN, Aircraft Response, manned 24/7, highly trained to deal with aircraft firefighting. I know Hollywood does not have that. So, I think when you look at, you can't compare apples to apples. You have to look at more holistically of what all the other specialized units are within the public safety section. And then, as it was mentioned about the Circuit, you know, I would like to point out on that slide and I think it kind of got overshadowed. Currently, there's nine vehicles that is running on the Circuit. If this funding goes through, it'd be 20. But really, how many of those 20 vehicles? It's really kind of not a sufficient amount to do it. I've written it. I've ridden it. I've ridden in the past two months on three occasions, and I've had to wait 40 minutes each time just to go from where I live in the Central Beach area down to what we call the Sunset Lane Village area, right?
Sunrise Lane.
Sunrise Lane. You know, 40 minutes each way, and that's in the middle of the afternoon, and I chose it to ride just to save for parking, just to see. So I'd encourage, as we move forward with funding in that program, we do look at what Hollywood's doing, where they do charge a ridership fee. Thank you.
Could have walked it in 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Just saying.
And I did it for the experience because I knew that this is an issue.
Right.
But the 20 vehicles will make a difference in that wait time, don't you think, versus nine vehicles?
Depends on where they're located. If they're in the downtown area during the daytime hours, yes. I mean, that's, they have to strategically plan where to put them. Because I watched on the app where they were pulling those vehicles, they were coming from the Flagler Village area in the downtown, coming all the way just to pick me up, take me to Sunset Village, and then come back, and then on the return trip, same thing. So they diverted those back to the downtown area, which is understandable because that's a heavy ridership in the daytime to the week.
All right, so we'll have to figure that out. If we have to, you know, repopulate the number on the beach, then that would be part of this process. I agree. You know, you shouldn't have to wait 40 minutes. It's ridiculous.
But Bill brings up a very good point that I was absent in mentioning. Some of these other cities had a very small surcharge fee. So if we could look at that and be open to that, I know if it meant my time went down from 40 minutes or whatever, and I would pay the $2 or whatever, if we could then get 30 or 40 vehicles, because we're doing some revenue sharing with people, and I know that a lot of people that are walking out of a hotel would be willing to fork over, oh, it's only $2 and go, after they pay $385 a night for a hotel. I think that we just need to relook at that whole thing, and so I forgot to mention, thank you, Bill, that we were thinking about what could we do to enhance revenue so we could get more vehicles.
Brian, in that regard, one of the things we did mention talking about circuit is another thing, maybe having a membership or an annual, you know, for residents, they want to have an annual pass, so to speak. So that's another maybe source of revenue, too.
I just think there's a great opportunity there, and as long as all of you are in favor of going with this 2.5, that'll learn a lot. And if we can enhance through revenue streams, through partnerships with maybe the business area and the beach and the hotels, or ridership fees, et cetera, it could really be something. And to Commissioner Herbst's point, then it's electric. So we're all in favor of that part. We just felt that it was like not enough to really make an impact.
Okay, anyone from the commission have any more questions?
Brian, do you feel, you had given us the board's feelings about additional holidays, but also on that slide, I want to know if you feel the same way about the parental leave, because that was something that's, I've been asking for a couple of years now, but you feel the same way that that should be something that should be left to the bargaining?
Yes. When we have over 85% of our employees are part of a contractual obligation, so it really needs to be, if the employees through their representatives feel it's an important thing, then they'll make it important. So I think versus all of us who are not in that group, trying to say that that's what we think their priorities should be, but I really believe that the bargaining units know what their members really have as an importance.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank everyone on this board because I think the work that you do is invaluable. So I just wanted to thank you for the hours and hours and hours. Although this year, you didn't have to do that not-for-profit survey and questionnaire and interview, so that must have been a relief for you, Brian, I'm sure.
It was.
Yes.
And so it made the book a little lighter, but I still spent, you know, hours.
And I know how the board feels about that. That might be the only area where I might find a little bit of disagreement with you because I do think that the not-for-profits and, for me, especially the arts and cultural sector, they bring a certain value to our city that I think we always have to recognize. I'll bring this up later tonight when we have the budget meeting. I do believe that we should be restoring to the funding that we've always done every year for the museum, NSU Art Museum. There's just such a value in what our cultural arts organizations do to the city, how they service the children, how they service the neighborhoods, all the programs. I'll get into that later. A couple of years ago, we actually did fund some, actually maybe 20 or so of the arts and cultural smaller organizations. We've stopped doing that, but again, I see a lot of value in the not-for-profits that serve our city, and I think that when we can, especially if we just found, you know, an additional $5 million in state revenue, $20 million in because of an increase in assessments, I think that sometimes we can look a little harder and find some. But that probably is the only area that I find a little bit of disagreement with the board, but I wanted to thank you all for all of that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. It is afternoon right now. Yes. Thank you to BAP for everything that you've done, to the endless hours and time to put this together, to come again, to explain your reasons and how you have, you know, just taken the time to put this together, to make it clear for us to understand. For me, clarity, that's something I really appreciate. I want to just state on the record regarding law enforcement, we're moving in a direction, but there's much more to be done. And I'm trying to get away from just saying a district, but we have to realize what overall is needed for this city. There's not much conversation about the crime that is in District 3. I heard several times it was said that crime is low in the city, but when you're looking at a concentrated area that is dealing with violence daily, we can't ignore the fact, and that funding is needed for law enforcement on the ground, doing what is needed to reduce that violence. So we really didn't talk about that today and didn't have a conversation about funding certain entities for arts or things of that matter. I think our priorities need to be, we need to relook and evaluate what we are considering funding when it comes to the safety of the city overall, and then specifically in the district that we represent. I represent District 3, so I do not want that to go unnoticed or unconsidered because there is a situation just over the weekend. Not going into details of what our city faced over this weekend, but many of us sitting on this dais slept very well without realizing what was going on and just across the way from where some of us sleep. So moving forward, let us be more strategic, is the word I want to use, strategic in funding police, and we need them. And moving forward, we need to have that conversation deeper.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anybody else on the commission wish to add to the comments? Okay, they're being done. Mr. City Manager, do you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share?
No, just wanted to say thank you to the BAP board members for your time, your direction, your guidance. You know, these certainly present opportunities for Fort Lauderdale thriving, and we appreciate also the trust in the board, for the commission board, for helping us shape win-wins for the community, and we look forward to making these plans be executed very soon.
Great. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any thoughts?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I guess that concludes our meeting, and I too want to thank everybody on this panel. Mr. Patel, you didn't really add anything. I forgot to ask you. You're okay? Okay. You know, all the work that you do is immeasurable, and I know it's all volunteer work, and I know it takes a lot of time out of your personal lives, but we all thank you for the work that you do, and it adds greatly to our understanding of trying to get through what I consider a Byzantine volume of facts, figures, graphs, all kinds of things, just trying to navigate ourselves through the process. And you certainly make it a lot easier and more understandable, and hopefully the public as well, to be able to see exactly what the priorities are of the city and how they best accommodate the needs of our community. So again, thank you. Mr. Donaldson, any final words?
I just want to follow up real quick with the Vice Mayor. The Shot Spotter program has been expanded for this next year, and we were able to also, based upon the success of that program, was able to get additional grant funding for that. And so be glad to follow up with you on that. That is something that two chiefs ago had brought forward, and we were shocked at the fact that the first time that they did it, the first, I think it was 60 days, there were over 700 instances that were captured, and there were only 30 911 calls. So there was a lot of non-reporting of things. So there's been a lot of things that have been geared toward that. So even though you didn't have a person, which hopefully you do for next year, all of those police initiatives, and like your point is, needs to be strategic versus across the board, and it has been. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, meeting concluded.